Counselor Arroyo.
President.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Connolly. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Ross. Counselor Yancey. We do have a minimum before.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I'd ask all counselors and all guests to please rise as this time, as I have the honor to introduce my friend and colleague, City Counselor Sal Lamatina, who will introduce Father John Nazaro of the Cileesian Brothers to deliver today's invocation. After Father Nazaro delivers today's invocation, I'd ask all to remain standing as Counselor Lamatina will lead us in a salute to the flag. Counselor Sal Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor today to welcome Father John Nazaro to the Boston City Council. Father John Nazaro is a good friend. He is part of the Cilejans Order, which he has been a Cilejans brother now, at least for 40 years. In East Boston, the Cilejans Boys and Girls Club is a very important institution to our neighborhood. And as a kid, I went to Cilejans Boys and Girls Club and spent many, many days in my childhood at that place. And Father John actually went to Cilejans Boys and Girls Club. He's an East Bostonian as a kid, but he decided that he wanted to stay there and be able to come back to the neighborhood and give to the youth of our neighborhood. So he went on to seminary and he became a Cilejans brother. But he does God's work. To run a Boys and Girls Club, particularly a Catholic Boys and Girls Club, you have to go out there and raise a lot of funding. And he does that. He's doing fundraising. He's out there talking to the youth of our neighborhood, trying to get them jobs, keeping them out of trouble. So, Father, I appreciate the work that you do in East Boston, and I'm sure my colleagues here do. So, welcome to the Boston City Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you for having this opportunity. And I also came representing some of the people from East Boston to find out if Sal really is here. And he is. He's a good friend. Certainly, he is tortured by many people in the area. I know that. And he's a good sport, and he has a good sense of humor, and that's one of the wonderful things. I was thinking of what prayer to share, and just very simply, sometimes you have invocations and prayers, and you say, "What did that guy say?" It's always good to tell a little story, and the story is very short. And it's about Alan Alda, who we probably remember him if we're old enough, about MASH. And he wrote a couple of books. And one of the stories he told was when he lost his dog. His dog was called Rhapsody, and he loved that dog. And his parents loved him. They loved their son. So what they did was, they said, "Well, maybe we'll call the taxidermist and stuff Rhapsody, so this way our son will always have his dog forever." And Alan Alda was all excited about this. He was about seven or eight years old. And when the dog came back, they pulled a bag off his head, and the dog had a weird smile on its face. Didn't look like anything like he remembered his dog because they had a personal relationship. So they put the dog in the living room, but they were afraid to invite people over because the dog was kind of scary-looking in the corner. Then they put it on the stoop of the front steps, and of course, the mailman was afraid of it because, you know, and people would throw deliveries on the side. And then all of a sudden, Alan Alda realized the memories that he had of his dog were getting ruined by trying to hold on to the memory of the dog as he saw it present. The memories before were fantastic, but the memory of a stuffed animal weren't the best for him. And he said, "When we work with people, we work with real people, and we work with people that have real problems, and solutions come from real people." And I think that little story about the real is what we deal with here. So on behalf of certainly the citizens, which I am part of, even though I'm a priest, we're grateful for the sacrifices that many of you make, but more importantly, realize we're working with real people, and real people are here. And that's why we have a city council representing the real people. And thank you for keeping us safe, and more importantly, working together to make our city a wonderful city, as we hear over and over again that Boston is strong. God bless you.
Thank you, Father John, for your great message. Please join us as Counselor Lamatina leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. I stand on each individual individual.
Could you please have the attendance reflect that we have been joined by Counselor Presley, Counselor Baker, and Counselor Connolly since roll call?
Thank you.
I have the honor to introduce Counselor Ayanna Presley, who has two presentations this morning. And I would direct everyone's attention to the podium and to Counselor Ayanna Presley.
And so today, we are going to honor a young lady who is living history, and I have no doubt that there will be many other historic benchmarks in her life. Ina Beinborn is a 13-year-old seventh grader at Boston Latin. She is from Mission Hill, and in March, she became the first girl to win the Citywide Spelling Bee Championship since the Boston Centers for Youth and Families launched the contest some six years ago. And so Ina is visiting us in City Hall today with her principal, who will come up, you'll all come up now, and her parents and other family, her mother, Suni, and her father, Martin. Out of 27 spellers for this year's Citywide Spelling Bee Championship, 19 of them were Which is a marked shift. And the second-place winner is actually Crystal's son from Charlestown, who is also a girl. So this is a shift from past years. I'm so delighted that, you know, as we often say, too often, we're talking about the ways in which young people are challenged and the hardship of their life, but it's important that we recognize, validate, affirm, and celebrate those young people who are doing extraordinary things. I'm pleased we've been joined by the Mission Hill City Counselor, Michael Ross, as we are honoring a constituent of yours, Ina Beinborn, who is the, who won the Citywide Spelling, the first girl. Okay. So I'm going to invite her principal up to say a few words, and then we will have Ina come up.
Thank you very much, Counselor Presley. My name is Lynn Mooney-Tate. I'm the very proud headmaster of Boston Latin School, and only the second female headmaster in the school's 378-year history. Thank you. Ina's achievement is remarkable in that she was the first girl to win the Citywide Spelling Bee. And as Counselor Presley alluded, we will expect more significant accomplishments from Ina in the next five years on Avenue Louis Pasteur. So thank you very much for this honor on behalf of Ina and on behalf of the school. And I'd like to give her a moment if there's anything she would like to add. Ina?
And I have a question, Ina. What was the word that you won on?
Schnauzer?
Okay. All right. A few words. Okay, everybody. How do you spell that?
I'm really happy to be here today, and I feel very honored to be getting an award for winning the spelling bee, the city spelling bee, and being the first girl to do that. And I feel great that I've showed everyone some girl power.
Okay, so the city of Boston. All right. So Ina, official resolution be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to you in recognition of your demonstrated commitment to hard work and academic excellence and your historic achievement in winning the Boston Spelling Bee, the first girl. Girl power. All right. Hashtag that. If y'all join me at the podium for a photograph. I guess I'm gonna stand up here with you, hold your citation. We're gonna move to the minute. Move right here. I'm gonna stay here.
Busy, I know. Congratulations.
Okay.
So how do you spell Schnauzer?
Schnauzer. S-C-H-N-A-U-Z-E-R.
It's the C that's...
All right, very good. Congratulations. And the proud parents, excellent job. Dad with a camera and mom...
She's going on...
I told you.
Of course. Thank you. So, you know, hang on for a couple of minutes, okay? If you'll just go join your parents, and I'll come join. Eric, just keep the family together because I'm... All right. If we can settle, and my colleagues will indulge me for one more brief presentation. All right. So as the founder and chair of the Committee on Women and Healthy Communities, I've always maintained that what makes us Boston strong, what makes for a healthy community are stabilized families. And it really is incumbent upon us as a city to make sure that the city work for every family model, whether you are a single-parented household, such as the one I was raised in, whether you are a family of one, whether you are grandparents raising grandchildren, whether you are two mommies or two daddies, that the city should work for every family model. And in keeping with that, in light of the fact that there is a, the annual Greater Boston P-Flags upcoming Pride and Passion Gala is upon us, I wanted to invite a friend to the chamber and honor her. She's going to talk a little bit about the organization and extend a formal invitation. And we are also partnering on an LGBT Family Summit that I'll be doing, which we'll be hearing more about shortly. So just a little bit about Greater Boston P-Flag. They're a group of parents, families, friends, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people. They help to change attitudes and create an environment of understanding so that our LGBT family members and friends can live in a world that is safe and inclusive. Through support, education, and advocacy, they foster dialogue, create safe environments, open hearts and minds. Please join me at the podium. Okay. And so, official resolution be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Greater Boston P-Flag in recognition of your steadfast dedication and advocacy for Greater Boston's LGBT families and community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. My name is Pam Gueramone. I'm the executive director of Greater Boston P-Flag, and thank you, Counselor Presley, for awarding P-Flag this prestigious honor, especially in a city that's run by Mayor Manino, who's been a true advocate for LGBT people and friend to Greater Boston P-Flag. So thank you very much, and we really appreciate this award. Thank you.
And we hope you'll join at the gala.
And we hope you will join us at the Pride and Passion fundraiser. Mayor Manino is our co-chair. Governor Deval Patrick is another co-chair, and it's May 16th at 6:00 PM, and we hope that you'll all be there. Thank you.
Excellent. If anyone wants to join us.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I don't know.
Oh, I don't know. Maybe. That's right. And no one else did.
If there are no corrections or objections to be made, the minutes from last week's meeting stand approved. Seeing a hearing, no corrections or objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket 0726, message and ordinance amending the City of Boston Code, Chapter 7, Section 7, Dash 2 of the City of Boston Code, Air Pollution Control Commission, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 26, 2013.
Docket 0726 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0727, message and order authorizing the Boston Centers for Youth and Families to accept and expand a grant of $306,337.35 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Early Education and Care for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department for the purposes of funding the Community Child Care Program located in City Hall Child Care and Ellen Jackson Children's Center.
Docket 0727 will be referred to the Committee on Women and Healthy Communities.
Docket number 0728, message and order authorizing the mayor's office of New Bostonians to accept and expand a grant of $250,000 from contributions received from the individual organizations and local private businesses for the purpose of funding the English for New Bostonians Initiative.
Docket 0728 will be referred to the Committee on Women and Healthy Communities.
Docket number 0729, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand a grant of $200,000 from the BA Foundation to the Boston Educational Development Foundation, Inc., B E D F, for the purposes of developing standardized processing to maximize energy efficiency and corresponding operational savings in all department construction projects, and to procure solar energy for installation at school department facilities.
Docket 0729 will be referred to the Committee on Environment.
Docket number 0730, message and order authorizing the Boston Centers for Youth and Families to accept and expand a grant of $87,768 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Office of Nutrition, Health, and Safety for the purpose of funding the Boston Centers for Youth and Families Child and Adult Care Food Program located at City Hall Child Care and Ellen Jackson Children's Center.
Docket 0730 will be referred to the Committee on Women and Healthy Communities.
Docket number 0731, message and order authorizing the Environment Department to accept and expend a grant of $25,000 awarded by the National Park Services passed through the Massachusetts Historical Commission for the 2013 survey and planning.
Docket 0731 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0732, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest dated April 10, 2013, for the Boston Arts Academy, 174 Ipswich Street, Boston, Mass. 02215.
Docket 0732 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0733, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts Building School Authority the Statement of Interest dated April 10, 2013, for the Blackstone Elementary School at 380 Shawmat Ave., Boston, Mass. 08, I mean 02118.
Docket 0733 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0734, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest dated April 10, 2013, for the West Roxbury Education Complex, including Urban Science Academy and West Roxbury Academy, 1205 BFW Parkway, West Roxbury, Mass. 02132.
Docket 0734 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0735, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest dated April 10, 2013, for the Mario Umana Academy, 312 Board Street, East Boston, Mass. 02128.
Docket 0735 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Reports of public... Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancey.
On the statement of interest to the Committee on Ways and Means, we had a hearing, a Ways and Means Committee hearing on the school department a couple of days ago, and Mr. McNunn, who represented the superintendent, indicated that there are more than 5,000 Boston public high school students who are attending non-high school buildings. That's up 2,000 from when the Blue Ribbon Commission issued this report calling for the construction of two new high schools. Unfortunately, Mr. President, once again, there's no request for a statement of interest to construct a new high school. And I'm deeply concerned about that, particularly in light of the fact that this issue has been before us for more than 15 years, and we're investing $115 million to construct a brand-new office complex that not would accommodate any high school students, but will accommodate the school department. So I raise this, Mr. President, in the hopes that at some point before the end of this fiscal year, that this body will take the initiative and approve a loan authorization, given the administration permission to borrow money for the purposes of building at least one new high school, so that some of those 5,000 students who are going to substandard buildings can go to facilities that are equal to the dozens of brand-new high schools that have been built throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's only fair. We should not put our high school students at a disadvantage by sending them to substandard facilities when we have this great need and the opportunity to improve their chances. It will take one or two years before a new building is constructed, but every year, generations upon generations of high school students are subjected to inferior facilities, and I don't think that's fair to them, but even worse, it's not fair to the future of Boston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Docket 0735 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0736, communication was received from President Murphy regarding a change to the Boston City Council meeting schedule, adding a meeting on June 19, 2013, at 12:00 PM.
Matter will be placed on file.
Docket number 0737, notice was received from the clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the city council at the meeting of March 27, 2013.
Docket 0737 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0738, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding the action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of April 3, 2013.
Docket 0738 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0739, communications was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston redevelopment authority on the second report and decision on St. Petrolle Terrace Apartments, Chapter 121A project.
Chair recognizes Counselor Tito Jackson on docket 0739. Do I have that correct?
This, that the community has demanded, sadly, one of our universities actually purchased affordable housing, and this would actually be a disposition that allows for that affordable housing to actually be moved into the hands of a nonprofit and to be put really into perpetuity relative to the affordable housing status. We don't want to see large nonprofits in the city of Boston, in particular colleges and universities, taking control of affordable housing, waiting till the covenant is done, and then moving students in. So that's exactly what this will do, and hopefully, we will look on it positively. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Docket 0739 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket numbers 0670 through 0679, orders for FY14 revolving funds for school department, police department, mayor's office of arts tourism and special events, and fire department to reestablish in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 and One Half, a revolving fund.
Docket 0670 through 0679 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0610 through 0630, order for FY14 operating capital and school budgets, including annual appropriations, tax orders, loan orders, and tax-exempt refunding bonds.
Docket 0610 through 0630 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Could I just call for a quick recess?
Counsel Connolly.
Thirty seconds.
For thirty-second recess.
So, so granted.
Me? Oh, sure.
the search for new superintendent of the Boston schools.
Chair recognizes City Council John Connolly on docket 0741.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Presley, for letting me take this out of order. I think the hearing order speaks for itself, and I'll be real brief. We know Carol Johnson has announced that she'll be leaving her post in the summer, and we thank Dr. Johnson for her hard work, her dedication, and her great compassion for our children in Boston and for all children, and greatly appreciate her efforts. But I hope, in terms of furthering the dialogue about who will replace Dr. Johnson, the Committee on Education can have a hearing, invite the public, invite anyone who wishes to testify on this matter, and talk about what it is that we are looking for in the next superintendent, and hopefully help foster the beginning of this process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Connolly. Docket 0741 will be referred to Committee on Education. Docket 0740. Oh, Madam Clerk, could you please add the name of Counsel Matt O'Malley to docket 0741? Thank you. Madam Clerk, docket 0740.
Docket 0740, Counsel Presley offered the following order for hearing to discuss the need for a comprehensive trauma response system for the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes City Council Ianna Presley on docket 0740.
Thank you, Mr. President. As all of you are well aware, since I joined the council, trauma has been one of the issues that I've been working on, be it trauma from homicide, trauma from sexual violence. Today, I want to talk about trauma in the aftermath of the tragic events at the marathon. I think it is also important to note that for our service member veterans of war, for the immigrants that make up this great city who have fled war-torn countries, for families who have been impacted by homicide, and even for those who are survivors of sexual violence, the marathon was a trauma trigger. I think for all those other issues, sexual violence, homicide, we too often other those things. That is something that happens to other people who don't look like me, who live in certain zip codes, certain neighborhoods. But given the magnitude of this tragedy, this cannot be othered because the impact is too great, and the gravity of the impact is understood by all. And so I think it's an opportunity for us to assess as a city, what is our coordinated trauma response. I want to publicly thank the city. They have demonstrated a yeoman's heroic effort in the wake of this tragedy to support people in the immediate aftermath. The problem with trauma is that it manifests in latent ways, and in everyone differently. Some people will shut down, some people will act out, some people will participate in destructive behaviors and harm themselves and, in turn, the health of our communities. So I filed this hearing order so that we can better understand what is the city's coordinated trauma response, what is working, how do we make the strategic investments, and that this is budget season, and anticipating how many people will be emotionally digging out from this tragedy for a very long time to come. I would also like to say that I want to make sure that those doing trauma services are also getting trauma support, our first responders, our second responders. And so that is really the purpose of the hearing. I would say my one pet peeve, although I do recognize that we are Boston strong, is that too often we recognize or characterize ourselves as being resilient, and that would imply that because we are still standing and functioning, that we are well when there are many cracks. We are not resilient. What we are is time delayed, and the pain and the trauma of this will show up for a long time to come. Even if you are not personally affected, we have all been impacted. In the same way that hope ripples, so does trauma. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Chair recognizes Counsel Sal Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this opportunity to commend the maker. This is very important. Many, many years ago, we had a family tragedy where a close relative of mine was murdered, and I still get emotional about it, and I wish years ago that I had someone that I could have talked to. And we didn't have that in Boston when that happened. But recently, myself and my colleagues, we were at the Boston Marathon, and I was at Abel Lou's with Representative Aaron Mikowitz. And I could tell you in the aftermath, in the days that followed, Representative Mikowitz had a hard time dealing with this. And I had talking to Counsel Linehan and Counsel Murphy, myself, and probably Counsel Ross. I had a hard time sleeping the first week, and I was not right at home, and with a lot of feelings going back and forth. So I think this is a hearing that is very important for the city. Just to have people, being able to have someone to talk to is very important. So I commend you for this. I think it's very important, and I ask that all my colleagues sign on. Thank you.
Thank you. Please add the name of Counsel Sal Lamatina. Chair recognizes Counsel Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to add my name to this and commend the author, Counsel Presley, on this matter, and also take a moment to recognize the Public Health Commission on the extraordinary job that they did to respond. Because Mark McGonigal, that works in my office, he worked with teens in trauma before he came on with me, and he was one of the folks that was at Park Square Building and at the old U M B Library at the castle. And he also, we had 15 people in South Boston alone that were affected both physically and emotionally and mentally by the bombing, and they were right in the, I would say, within feet of the situation of the first bomb. So, and he was part of that. And folks had just reached out from the medical community. So to have a hearing, to recognize, and also to solidify the response in the future, I think is poignant and needed. Thank you.
Please add the name of Counsel Bill Linehan. Chair recognizes Counsel Tito Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank Counsel Presley for the fast work that she has done in this space, even prior to this tragedy, to continue to bring up this work as well as the resources that are needed. I will note that in Roxbury, Dorchester, Southend, Brighton, and Rosendale, there have been 24 shootings since the marathon incident occurred. There is urban terror happening all over the city of Boston, and trauma that is not limited to the folks who are exposed to it on Boylston Street. So we want to make sure, and some folks would have you make one be pit against the other. It's the same thing, the same feelings, the same fear, and the same latent reaction that many of us have to this. And I look at you, Mr. President, as someone who is yards away from this. And I know we're all big and strong, and we're Boston strong, but I think Counsel Presley brings up that, you know, not only should we be Boston strong, we should be Boston smart, we should be Boston ready, we should be Boston compassionate, and we should be Boston trauma-ready relative to the resources that need to be allocated. And I will note, as Counsel Presley said, we need to make sure that our first responders get all of the resources. And if that requires for us to dip into the piggy bank even more, we need to do what needs to be done to make sure that they are actually ready for the next situation that could occur. So I think this is timely and important, but we need to broaden our aperture relative to what we're talking about because trauma is not limited to the folks who are along the Boylston Street corridor. It is spread throughout our city as a whole. Please add my name, and thank you for your leadership, Counsel Presley.
Please add the name of Counsel Tito Jackson. Please also add the name of Counsel Charles Yancey, Counsel Mike Ross. Chair recognizes Counsel Rob Consavo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I rise to ask that my name be added and to really commend the maker for this thoughtful hearing order, and echo all the comments that everybody made about our first responders and how much we thank, respect the work that they've done in dealing with this, and ask that they get help if they need it as well. I'm particularly concerned about the impact on children, and one of the things that I want to talk about at this hearing is the impact on children. As many of you know, as all of you know, I have three young kids who are 10, 9, and 3. And so trying to answer their questions and deal with their concerns over this, believe it or not, and I know Counsel Baker has young children, and I'm sure he was going through the same thing, and not so much Austin, who's 3, but Amanda and Anthony, who are 10 and 9, were actually asking questions about it, and I was not prepared to answer those questions, and still look to this day for help understanding how I should answer those questions to Amanda and Anthony. And we tried our best to keep it away from them on the TV as best we could, but they get a hold of the remote control when you're not looking, right, Frank, and they put on whatever they want to watch, as we try to keep them away from it, and we try to steer them to other shows. I was even going to let them watch Family Guy as a way to get them away from watching CNN when that was going on. But unfortunately, unfortunately, though, it's a serious issue, and they still ask questions to this day, and their friends are talking about it. They had friends over for play dates. Those friends were talking about it. So we need to be prepared in the Boston Public Schools and in our neighborhoods and in our community centers and in our YMCA's and in our libraries about how the discussion for the kids of our neighborhoods are addressing this, and how the parents of the kids in the neighborhoods and the community leaders who deal with kids in the neighborhoods, the camp counselors, the coaches, how they can also deal with talking to the kids of our city about it. I think it's an important piece of it, and I look forward to that piece in this as well.
Please add the name of Counsel Rob Consavo. Chair recognizes Counsel Felix Arroyo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to add myself to the chorus of those commending the author, asking for my name to be added. And so how timely this is, you know, it's -- the vast majority of our students in our Boston Public Schools are dealing with some level of trauma. And as someone, as many of you know, my mom, my sister, and my wife are all Boston Public School teachers, and they recognize as teachers that it's very hard to learn when you're dealing with these traumas. It's very hard to learn when you're trying to explain to an eighth grader, like I was, why their close friend was murdered. It's very hard to learn when you're trying to explain why sometimes fights at home lead to some very terrible results, why their cousin is no longer around, why their sister's no longer around, why they saw what they saw in their streets. And now add to that what frankly every person in the city of Boston can very easily watch, which is the devastation that happened on April 15 of 2013. And so to the extent that out of this tragedy, we can come up with a 1,000% comprehensive trauma response that not only deals with the response to the trauma that all those who care about and love Boston would be feeling post-April 15, but the trauma that our children, as Counsel Consavo noted, but our students in the BPS, and those of us in the city who are dealing with trauma every day from what we just see in our neighborhoods and what we may have witnessed once or twice in our lives, I could firsthand account say that it's very difficult when you're at a young age to comprehend life and death, and particularly when a close friend of yours is no longer with you, and you can carry that for the rest of your life. And getting into our schools and approaching these families and dealing with that trauma is as important as getting them to the hospital when they're physically hurt. And I think we also should begin to see our mental health as equally as important as our physical health. And anything we could do in our city to make that happen would just make us that much more of a stronger city. Imagine how much stronger we can be when we all know that we are indeed Boston strong now. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Please add the name of Counsel Felix Arroyo. Please also add the name of Counsel Frank Baker, Counsel Moxiomo, and Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Matt O'Malley and my name. And I would just say briefly that congratulations, Counsel Presley. You're filling a real void here. As someone who was like Bill Linehan 50 feet from the first explosion, I saw it happen. It hasn't hit me yet. I'm kind of still, I don't know, going along as if it didn't happen even though I was there, and I saw all our first responders rush through. I don't know if I'm in denial or what about it, but obviously, the fire department has a requirement, it's part of collective bargaining, that if a first responder firefighter goes to something like this, they have to go to counseling. The police department has a stress unit. I'm not sure about Boston EMS, but I think everybody, everybody who experiences something like this should take the time to talk about it with an expert. I really do. So congratulations, Counsel Presley. For the last word, Chair recognizes Counsel Ianna Presley.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for your comments. And I did just want to say to Counsel Consavo and Counsel Arroyo's points in particular, it is important to acknowledge that this occurred during school vacation week, and so there was an incredible overexposure. And I did visit the Dorchester Neighborhood Charter House, which was uniquely impacted in that the Richard family, Denise is a teacher there, and both of her children are students there. And there are currently five social workers at that school, and they sojourned on the best way that they could, even though they were all devastated. But what you'll be encouraged to hear, because of the work that we as a body have done, and those of us who have been fighting for socio-emotional support, because there are so many non-academic barriers to the success of our children, domestic violence, hunger, you know, any sort of life disruptive act, that when the Boston Public Health Commission came in to give those social workers reinforcement, they were supposed to be there for three days, and they left after one because the kids were okay. And I do believe that is because those kids had those socio-emotional wellness supports year-round. And so they had a stronger and better foundation to better understand this. It was actually the adults that needed the additional support and help, and they swore by, and I have to name him, Courtney Gray. We all know him. Courtney, who not only supported that school but stood on that Garvey Park field and addressed 3,000 people who were hurting, and then within hours was at the scene of homicide supporting those families. One person cannot do that work alone. So I did just want to say to the point of the children, yes, our schools have done an excellent job, but we need to have a sustainable socio-emotional wellness wraparound support, therapists, social workers, school nurses. We shouldn't need a tragedy as an impetus to provide those wraparound supports year-round. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Docket 0740 will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Madam Clerk, docket 0742.
Docket number 0742, Counsel Lamatina and Linehan offered the following order for hearing regarding funds for park development and redevelopment.
Chair recognizes Counsel Sal Lamatina on docket 0742.
Most dynamic park system in the country. The oldest park is the Boston Commons, and I believe that 4% of the city landmass is made of parks. And I don't have to tell you the benefits of the parks, particularly now where more and more people are moving into the city, particularly in the downtown neighborhoods. And just this past weekend, we were at Boston Shines. and I was in my district. And there were cleanups in many of our parks. People volunteering, spending money to make sure that our parks are nice. But despite all the benefits that we have in our parks, I really believe that our park system is underfunded. This year, the budget is almost $17 million. And out of that $17 million, a little over $3 million is in that budget for maintenance over. And I think the Parks Department has something like 240 sites that they maintain, 200 parks and the rest of the field houses and squares throughout the city of Boston. And then they maintain thousands of trees throughout the city. And as you know, when you put a request in together, a tree might take years because we just don't have the money to go out there and do all the maintenance that we need to do. So that shortfall means that we struggle to fix our parks and playgrounds and maintain our trees. And I know that the mayor and all of us here, we want to keep, make sure that our parks are beautiful. And we all recognize how important it is to improve our parks and how important it is to our constituents and people that live here. And maintain is to maintain our status as a world-class city. We need to invest more in our parks. And recently, the mayor stated that in the next year, so there's going to be $5 billion in new construction in the city of Boston. And as you know, if there's a major development near a park, there's some money from mitigation that would go to a park near that development. But a lot of this development happening downtown, it's not near a park. So and I also know, we all know that 13 years ago, there's money set aside from executive order by the mayor, inclusionary development programs, which set aside 13% of that development for affordable housing units. But I think it's time that we really look, and I'm looking for all my, I need all your help, that we come up with some kind of plan that sets aside monies to the park systems for the maintenance and the infrastructure of our park systems. So what I want to do is, I don't know, maybe we look at the Community Preservation Act or doing something like that in the city of Boston. But I'm looking to get the Parks Department, the BRA budget, and you to come up with a plan how we could get some more money to fund our parks. Thank you. I hope you will get involved in this effort.
Thank you, Counsel LaMettina. Chair recognizes Counsel Bill Linnahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Counsel LaMettina, for the opportunity to sign on and to be a co-sponsor of this particular matter. You know, Sal has a real legitimate point. As we continue to grow as a city, not just in population, but also in the size and scope of its infrastructure, much of the money goes back into creating more revenue in the form of a tax base. There are also mitigations, as he said in the past, that are related to large developments. And to create a fund or to create a bank of, for a certain portion of money spent on development that go directly to this fund that would help to create more open space. The city is more dense. My district alone has 60% of all the development that's going on in this city. And everybody, every district in the city, everybody who lives in the city benefits from that. So it's really important that we create open space and create more of it. It's one of the issues that rises in and about the neighborhoods. Folks want someplace to go. They love the fact that there's more people, but they need more space to share community and time. So I'm in full support of this idea and look forward to all of us getting behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linnahan. Chair recognizes Counsel Tito Jackson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I rise because I have Franklin Park in my district. And for a long time, people from the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association have been asking for a comprehensive maintenance plan for that park. We know that all of the state cross-country championships actually happen in that park. It's very well used. And again, we definitely are in dire need of continued funding. In these past couple of years, we've seen funding go up to help that trail. But it is really needed to, we do need to have a sustainable flow of dollars for parks. If we are going to be one Boston and folks are going to continue to come together, we need to continue to have open space. And open space in neighborhoods are not only for the folks who are in those neighborhoods. They become an attraction for the city as a whole. And again, I think this is a really important plan. As we look at development and that word gets defined, development is also defined as places that we can come together as a community. And we need to fund those things as we do with the big buildings that we're funding. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Please add my name.
Please add the name of Counsel Tito Jackson. Chair recognizes Counsel Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to commend our good colleagues, Counsel LaMettina and Counsel Linnahan for offering this. As many of you know, Harambe Park, which used to be called Franklin Field, is one of the largest parks in the city. It's about the size of Boston Common. Not many people know that. And in this year's Capitol Plan, there is a request for funds to institute a study of Harambe Park. But I believe that we have to increase our support for parks throughout the entire city of Boston. They provide a very real refuge in a very busy city. And I certainly, again, want to commend the makers and ask that my name be added and look forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. Please add the name of Counsel Charles Yancey to that order. Please also add the name of Counsel Ayanna Pressley, Counsel Matt O'Malley, Counsel Rob Consalvo, Counsel Frank Baker, Counsel Moxiomo, and my name as well. Chair recognizes Counsel Ross, just to add his name. That matter, docket 0742, will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0743. Counsel Murphy ordered the following order for an appointment of temporary employees.
Counsel LaMettina moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0743. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0743 has passed.
Docket 0744. Counsel Murphy for Counsel Yancey.
Counsel Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0744. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0744 has passed. The clerk informs me that there are three late-file matters in her hands, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The clerk will read the first addition to the agenda.
Counsel Stephen J. Murphy for Counsel LaMettina ordered that effective May 14.
Counsel LaMettina moves suspension of the rules and passage of the personnel order. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The first late-file matter has passed.
Communication to the city clerk from Mayor Menino. Dear city clerk, I have accepted the resignation of school committee member John Barrows. I have enclosed a copy of Mr. Barrows's letter of resignation and asked that you notify the nominating committee so that they can begin the process of filing a vacancy on the school committee.
The second late-file matter shall be placed on file. Matter will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, please read the third late-file matter.
To the city councilor, to the city council, dear councilors, I transmit herewith and for your approval, an order unanimously approved by the honorable body on April 10, 2013, which would approve the transfer of certain land at North Hampton Street from the Boston Public Health Commission to a new nonprofit corporation established by the commission for the purpose of redeveloping the parcel. Under the terms of the Enabling Act of the Boston Public Health Commission, the Acts of 1995, Chapter 147, Section 713, any conveyance of land by the commission, whether by sale or lease, must be treated as the sale of city property pursuant to Chapter 1909, I'm sorry, section, state, I'm sorry.
Easy for you to say.
State statute 1909, Chapter 486, Section 2. Therefore, your honorable body must approve the attached order by a vote of two-thirds of all the members after a second reading by two separate votes. Insofar as the order was unanimously approved on April 10, I respectfully request your approval by at least two-thirds for a second vote.
Thank you. So something we passed on April 10, by voice vote, has been looked at in the rearview mirror and brought back to us in asking that we vote two successive roll call votes as if it was disposing our city property. It's Public Health Commission property. Chair recognizes the Chair of Economic Development, Counsel Bill Linnahan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is a letter from the mayor requesting this and something that, as part of this conveyance, that we probably should have done prior. We all voted for this. I held a hearing. It was a very in-depth hearing. We asked all the right questions. And so, and we all approved it. So I ask that we suspend and take another vote here today.
Okay, so you're moving on this.
Yeah, I'd like to move on this today if we could.
Counsel Linnahan is moving on the third late-file matter, which passed unanimously the city council on April 10 for a roll call vote for the disposition of certain land held right now by the Public Health Commission. The clerk will call a roll. A yes vote will be supporting the disposition of the land.
Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Conley. Counsel Consalvo. Counsel Consalvo, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel LaMettina. Counsel LaMettina, yes. Counsel Linnahan. Counsel Linnahan, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Ross. Counsel Ross, yes. Counsel Yancey. Counsel Yancey, yes.
Twelve of them affirmative. And it remains in the committee until a second vote can be taken. This is the second vote. Oh, okay, so this is the second vote. Okay, very good. Thank you. Matter has passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Chair recognizes City Councilor Mark Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. On April 13, the contract that was ratified by the Boston School Committee unanimously for the collective bargaining agreement with the Association of School Administrators and Supervisors, otherwise known as BASIS, was approved unanimously. And thus, we've already had a couple of hearings on these very same contracts that have come before us. Back on March 21, we had a hearing on the lunch monitors and school police, which we subsequently passed. As well as on April 4, we had a public health hearing regarding local 787. So I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this very similar, consistent collective bargaining agreement.
All right, what docket number is it?
I'm sorry. 0586 and 0587.
Madam Clerk, please.
Page 9 of 18 of the green sheets.
Please read those dockets, corresponding dockets into the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the committee on Ways and Means, offered by the mayor, docket number 0586, message and order to reduce the appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $593,982 to provide funding in the Boston Public Schools for the FY13 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Association of School Administrators and Supervisors. It was referred to committee on April 3. Docket number 0587, also in Ways and Means, referred by mayor, sponsored by mayor, message and order approving the supplemental appropriation of $539... I'm sorry. $539,982 for the Boston Public Schools for FY13 to cover the cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and BASIS. In docket number 0586, there would appear to be a typo in the green sheets of 539, which is what the official document on our green sheet.
Docket 0586. Question now comes on acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0586. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0586 has passed. Question now comes on acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0587. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0587 has passed. The clerk informs me that there are three late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted. And ask all councilors and guests at this time to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn. For this week's meeting, the meeting of May 1, the council is going to adjourn in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel LaMettina, Philip Carr. For Counsel Linnahan, Joan E. Fleming. For Counsel Consalvo, Joseph Pallettra. Counsel Siomo, Domenico Bakari, and Binland Lee, the BU student who died in the Alston Fire. For the Chair, the Honorable Joseph Nolan, who was a Supreme Court Justice here in the Commonwealth. And for the Chair and Counsel Moxiomo, John McDermott, former city councilor Jerry McDermott's brother, who's a veteran of the Nashua Police Department who died suddenly last week. So if we could have a moment of silence for those individuals. The chair moves when the city council adjourns. It does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again next Wednesday, May 8, at 12 o'clock noon. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Council stands adjourned.